We need to end this.
Looks like six patients.
Yes, actually.
Yes.
Now, we can put it.
Yeah.
It expired in one year.
Correct.
Yes.
Oh, there's one there, too.
What were you looking for?
So we eleven and a half hours ahead?
Right? We realized we're speeding this late.
Am I encroaching on you?
No, he is.
Oh, he is. I have my papers kind of listed and am I encroaching on you, Rick? And he goes, no, genius.
Well, I like the former. At least I'm all off. I have eight fifty-seven. I think we'll call myself at some time, so. That's that.
I'm not sitting here for thirteen hours.
Jim is usually pretty good about getting that set. I seen him this morning, but I never thought of the clock. That's kind of gets.
Was it due to a power blip or something? City of Stanton? I believe they get their power from WAPA, but technically the city is the.
I was curious still where.
Well, they go through WAPA. Don't they get it from these cities?
Yeah.
But I think they buy directly from them, don't they?
Yeah.
Are they, are they a class A?
I guess I don't know their classification. I just know that the city.
Yeah, I know the city's got their own. They're the one of the few that have it.
Yeah, Stanton and Riverdale has it. Those are the only two I know of, but.
Do we have those zoning cases in your summer, I suppose?
Yeah, I think it's like the second little thing in there.
All right, I have nine o'clock on my phone, so if that's okay with everyone, I'll call this commission meeting to order. I'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
Highway Department pickup repair.
Highway Department.
And I would, under other business, add landfill hauling or dirt hauling.
Landfill policy?
Landfill dirt hauling.
Yeah, wait, okay.
Under, under business also request to sell sheriff vehicles.
Sell vehicles?
Sell vehicles, sheriff vehicles.
Oh, sell.
Sell, yeah. Disposable assets.
Disposable, whatever you want to.
Okay, anything else?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
Jamie, a second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Approval of the minutes.
Carmen, was there any major changes that you? No, it was just, or just word, what I could gather, it was just verbiage. Yep. Basically, and names and commas.
So was there anything that needed to be changed?
I don't think so. I think.
I don't think so, but she sent out one copy and then sent in an amended copy. What I could gather, it looked as just.
Okay.
Verbiage changes.
I'll move to accept it as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done. Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Reviewing approved vouchers.
Okay, just so you know that Liza and Jean just put their travel in, so I have them right on top. And we're gonna add them in to the bills. I made a note on the sticky note and just.
But that's the, the total will be different?
Yeah, the total will be different, yeah.
Jean, I think you should just make a recording of your spiel, that you, every time you're gonna get like one of those people.
There's, there's nobody here, so I got, that's why I said.
Okay, before watching the video, you've never watched the video?
Oh, okay. We are now gonna go through the bills. It takes approximately a half hour, so. And every commissioner looks at every bill.
But then he offers up coffee. He's like, I don't know if we got any coffee.
But I might word it differently every time. Well.
He likes to keep you.
I got a call one time by someone who said, question the bills. And I said, oh, no. Every commissioner looks at every bill.
That is present at the meeting.
Yes, we do. Oh, yes.
Then their complaint was invalid, right? Or they retracted, or they just said, okay?
Didn't have a lot to say after that. And then it's on, we don't see the bills. They go, that's great one. So I think my expense, I think my expense should have the vice chair side because assignment and expense.
And it's not really a question of the bill.
Yeah, it's still, to me, that just doesn't, if you don't write that.
Why one is in a certain spot or something.
I got a question here.
I was trying to think.
On a different device.
Diane Anderson?
Oh, election worker.
Oh, I was kind of thinking about it, but I wasn't.
I was just curious who it was, so. Makes sense.
Oh, yes, well.
Yeah, yeah, we tried moving legs. We tried doing. Yeah, it was pretty bad, so I have them on silver traps, which is like a machine.
And this is for mileage. They also get.
No, this is what they get. I think that's their total bill, because, yeah, they do get mileage and hourly rate. It's like.
Right, but that's not on here. It just says.
She has three and a half hours, but then it just says mileage.
Oh, okay, then this is just being the paperwork.
Right, but they're, ask my question is for these three and a half hours, JJ, do you have hourly rate?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll be added on here. Or is this, are we approving to seventeen forty-two?
Yeah.
Or are we approving this also?
No.
Just the mileage? What about?
Well, it, yeah, that'll come later.
Because there was different forms last time.
If you wanna find out.
No, no, we're gonna approve that today.
Just the seventeen forty-two?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what's on there, approve that.
Right.
Because she paid him out instantly for the hours. You know, they did about that for everything.
I was just confused because it said to wash right in my.
I've seen dollars.
Yeah.
I just asked her about that.
And ended over there.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, I was confused, too. I'm like, wait a minute.
Well, I kind of assumed, like, it was probably something happened here and then it had to be.
Sure did.
So if somebody comes to pick it up, we recoup that cost in order to go to the.
They typically have to pay it.
Right.
I don't know if it's gonna be that much. If he has one, he should.
I can send your rate.
There's quite a few on, on more of those.
Well, yeah, it says five, but I'm sure there's those big ones, but just like.
I'm engineering.
Yeah.
Well, my lawnmower is about a hundred bucks for three of them.
Say, Carmen?
Yes.
There's refunds for the twenty-four seven program here, and one has a sheet that goes with it, but the other name on here doesn't have their own sheet when they need one. See, this guy has his little sheet. The other guy doesn't.
Here's your answer to your question.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Right, and this one's quite similar, Ken, so.
That's right.
Okay. I'm gonna quick make a copy of this, but then we'll look this one through.
Okay.
Because obviously, and that would've been from Pam.
Yeah. Here's a break right now.
So I'll just leave a note.
Okay. We didn't do anything else, tell them.
Of course, it was the cheap one.
Oh, right here.
Oh.
Oh. Carmen?
Yes, right here.
Oh, okay, all right, good. She separated, no one's hard to worry about.
Good eye, Jamie.
I just picked it up. I was like, oh, wait, all the same names we got.
It's like, now, like Pam did not have.
Yeah.
She's usually very good with them.
Because we were just talking.
Rick? Could you maybe talk to the Sheriff's Department about making sure that they have the proper names on their wax cards? Because this one has Michelle Anderson, who hasn't been announced for a while.
Maybe she stopped by for a while.
A few times.
Hey, you talked to Jeff or John and all of that, and they already heeded.
Oh, okay.
They wanna keep that, so I think they'll visit you on that soon.
Yeah, it's just that one.
But it was just in the vehicle, because she's got Michelle, too. Or, you know, so probably.
Yeah.
Just needs to be switched.
I just wanna make sure that if something ever comes out of it, that it comes out, go to Michelle.
I was about to ask you, but that's to be exactly what it's gonna ask, okay?
We have the three on first side of these. We got the gold one.
Okay.
And then we have one over by north.
Carmen, do you know at times that you guys are at that Tyler group meeting?
What you got is somewhere, if you don't try it, nothing.
Okay, what do you mean, over in Bismarck? Because that bill has nothing to do with the training.
No, I'm looking at mileage stuff I'm wondering about.
Was it an all-day training? Oh, yes, yes, it was. Just one, one day, but all day? Yeah, yeah. You had to be there by eight. It didn't end till, I believe, it was after four.
Um, one of the cars.
One of them, I should know.
I think the car Ginger's using has Michelle's name on it, because it was probably just in the vehicle.
Yeah, so usually, I've talked to them a few times, and they've done a really good job about switching stuff, but see how it says Michelle Anderson. But, yeah, we know it's Ginger's. Yeah, but we need to make sure that we get that one adjusted, too.
Not rolling very well? No. They go well backwards. Forward's not so much.
More mature than, huh?
Turn off your spinner.
So we're, we're okay with the bill? You just wanna see some change?
Yeah, just wanna make sure that name got adjusted.
I'll put it on my notes, yeah.
In trouble with this one?
No, I don't know if I, if I messed this up here.
Do you have any ordinances on fireworks on the county?
Not that I know of.
I just thought this is one.
I don't know, I think it's.
There's a list of all the cities open control room there. Carmen?
Yes.
Does Craig have a receipt for this?
Oh, she didn't get him yet. They always email him to us and he didn't come yet.
Okay.
For any of his vouchers there. Okay, we didn't have any.
What creates a scram refund?
If they get off early, or if they go to another area and have their scram put on somewhere else, or something like that, too. So sometimes they'll pay ahead, because scram costs a certain amount of money a day. And so they might pay, put a whole bunch down, so they don't have to worry about it, but then find out that maybe it gets to get taken off because the courts, they're not on pretrial anymore when they got sentenced, so they don't have feathers for it anymore.
Okay.
That's just for that month.
Correct.
Yep. I was gonna say, wait a minute, I seen one online, on there, like, oh, it's been on way longer than that, but then I noticed it's just for a month.
Can we check their work?
I don't know how to.
Yeah, I got a settlement report, but. The call you made was not quite what we expected.
The first one was, it was good, and after that, it wasn't too good.
Okay.
Actually, the first two were pretty decent, more than we could travel on, and that one wasn't really good, and the last one wasn't.
Because she printed out, she has it on the computer, and so is it asked, I don't know, a lot of people have it on the computer, and then they type it in, and when they print them out, they get this. Those are, we used to do, I was, I was, you know, take this. They were.
Okay. This, you see this voucher they printed out on?
Yes, yes, on the bathroom.
Can I have this one? Okay.
Or the law enforcement center.
Can I get, like, one of these?
Right outside Jim's office, which was the bathrooms between Jim's office and State Street's office.
Okay.
Is it like a kitchen or anything?
I think there was a pop cyclical and something for, and.
So what happened?
Backing up into.
And if you bring it, you get it's all.
Bathroom outside of like Mark and Ken's, the floor drains.
I got time, right?
Yeah.
And to see his grease food.
Okay.
Which there's a kitchen outside the State Street room, Jim's office, and it looks like those bathrooms in sync. And went over to the other bathroom.
Just wondering if there's something, we should have like a recent separate, but if it's.
We don't. They don't, right, cause all the food like in the jail booth, bird eggs in there. So, so nothing ever comes back to the kitchen. And nothing's cooked. It's all, it's all oven, like baked in the oven.
And then it's disposable plates.
And sporks, sporks.
But I mean. Restaurant or something like that from washing all the dishes.
Right, yeah, no. And I mean, when they have the kitchen set, there's, there's traps and all that back there in the kitchen. Something, something cooked from scratch.
I mean, they won't cover it. All I'm gonna ask them about is that.
Want this morning to get? Here a little early.
That's what's really messed up.
One is really late.
Did Stanton have a power outage then? Okay.
I think it was one in the morning.
Stanton, Stanton Bula, Hazen up to Hazen Bay, we, without power, southern.
That was just last night or?
No, Sunday night.
Okay, I was gonna say I had like a three second one.
Wow, it was out for like an, almost an hour and a half.
That's why I asked him, I thought it was a rock going.
I don't.
North of, and Hazen, everything south of Highway two was fine, but everything north of Highway two.
We had no power. We had. Me and my in-laws, the neighbors down the road, but I could see out my north window, I could see to the highway, somebody had a yard laid on still at the highway.
Mine, my court workers are out, but we're all fine.
No, we were out, but then.
I didn't get it out my mind.
I was curious.
The dividing line. The dividing line between M D U and Ruffrider Electric is that street that runs east-west just north of the school. Everything north of there is Ruffrider Electric.
So, so southern.
I, I live in that town, I don't know the street.
The east west street north of the school.
That's right.
Whatever number that is.
By that tree.
By the tree.
By, by Johnson's barn that has been there for sixty years.
Now we're communicating.
Yes.
The rock could be in the corner.
Right, 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 that I moved seventy-five years ago.
That gets confusing because even the hospitals.
Like across the Oliver County line, they had power, but then some people like. It was very.
When I was younger, my grandpa would say, could you go and get the whishamacallit from you know who, from you know where? Nine times out of ten, you know what he was talking about.
You knew what he was talking about, didn't you?
Yep. Yeah, I'll be right back.
It's just all around the northeast.
Yeah, that's weird.
Then he'd say the South Conson, and I'd be like, which one is the South?
Which one is that? It both said North and South.
Right.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes.
There's a.
It goes to one, I have some.
Would this possibly be an insurance claim?
Was Horizon last left? Horizon was last one?
Usually if something happens to it, it breaks you something, that is the person we do, is an insurance claim. And it is responsibility of the.
Yep, I understand.
To do that, and then we put it in, we do that all the time. Rachel doesn't. Why, was it a?
Well, I don't know, I, I don't know, I didn't know anything about it.
Cause we're paying for it to replace this window and.
But if it was an accident, whatever, and they had to replace it.
I was just wondering if the rock came up and headed it.
Oh, that back window?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Well, it depends on what it is.
Is it less than a deductible?
Less than a deductible, then you don't run it there.
So.
How much was the window?
Two hundred and eighty-six.
Oh, and I don't know, if I, if I, if I close five hundred, I don't know, I'm just saying.
No, I think they put them all through.
Well, they're probably through, but if they.
Every single thing, if there's an accident, we put it through.
Right, but if it's less than what our deductible is, then we just pay it instead of having it go through it.
You don't think so?
I see them put everything through.
Oh, I ask them.
But Rachel would know, cause we work with her to do all that.
Yeah.
And definitely we can find out, it's just a matter of looking it up.
So should we okay this?
I would okay it, yeah.
No, no, we would pay it, but they reimburse us.
I, though, I'm asking my fellow commissioners if they're okay with us signing off on this and then still getting the answer later.
I guess I would like an answer because if, why would we be submitting through insurance if it's less than our deductible?
Okay.
To me that doesn't, to me.
Saying that we are, Jamie, I'm just saying that all I see is we put them through and.
I didn't say you said that, but it was stated that we put them all through insurance. Well, if it's less than a deduct- deductible, I don't know, why would we?
Correct.
Maybe.
Put her, why would we bother?
And maybe they don't.
None of us know what the deductible is.
None of us know what the deductible is, so I can't answer that question.
This is a question that has to go down.
Right, so could you?
But it went through the highway department.
It's kind of a convoluted thing, cause I'm asking if we want to pay the bill when we got a question on the bill. I think we're okay with it myself.
I think it needs to be paid either way, but.
Right.
Per should probably check into what the process is.
I'm sure that has.
I'll sign off on it and play it out. Basically, get it determined into insurance and if not, why not? Well, that's five hundred dollar deductible, we understand.
Right.
I'll, I'll ask them.
Rick, you wanna check on that, please? Perfect.
Any more homework we can give you, Eric?
Not over yet.
Not over yet. He just texted him a lot.
Yes, so don't forget.
Now, he's only gotta make sure it works twice a month.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
We're going into budget season, I'd be.
What they say of open clock is that right, at least twice a day, unless it's digital, then it could never be correct. But when that thing started, I don't think that did.
Motion to approve the bills. Also move.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Planning and zoning, Jen. Case number twenty-four oh six oh one.
This is an application from Mason Electric for approval of the condition we use to expand an existing substation within the agricultural zone. The subject parcel is located approximately, approximately two miles south and three miles east of Stagden. The extension consists of three point two acres in size and is located within the southeast quarter and southwest quarter of section twenty-one. township one forty-four north, range eighty-four west of the principal, principal meridian Mercer County. The original substation is two point zero two acres for a total of five point two two acres. Planning and zoning are recommended approval under seventy.
Any questions? Well, I should start out, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Now, any questions?
There wasn't very many questions at P N Z and since it's existing in an extension, P N Z didn't have any issues with it.
Okay, hearing, no further discussion, Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Resolution to amend zoning ordinance five zero seven seven, chapter four, special provisions. Holy cow. Oh, holy cow is not in there, sorry, temporary use permits, sand and permit, sand and gravel pits.
Yes, this is an application from the Mercer County planning and zoning to amend one chapter, one section of the Mercer County zoning ordinance. Chapter four, section four, and bringing permits.
What did they change?
Um, they added, um, the I I.
Okay.
And then they added those six things. Just to say I didn't gravel pits.
I'm assuming if we're changing an ordinance, we're gonna have to do a hearing and everything if we want to proceed with it.
Well, there was, just starting, like reading number four, and I had talked to the previous land use administrator. There's a portion of our zoning ordinance that is not up to date with the century code, saying that the board from time to time can make changes and it doesn't have to go through P N Z. So I think if we're gonna look at doing a portion of this, we need to do it in whole also. Because our overall total county's ordinance doesn't have the last update from that century code added to it.
Has, and. Did, uh, our state's attorney look at this? Okay. So. As one commissioner, Jamie has mentioned, maybe we need to look at some more and or different language.
Well, because this came up when I was looking at the solar ordinance, and so I did talk to Todd about the overall zoning ordinance, but it's also, you know, within this one. And the last update to that century code never made it into our zoning book. So then that does change some of these other things and the way we can amend these.
Okay, so then let's postpone this.
Opposed to this, this change to this one, but it, it goes higher than just this.
There are some, there are some things that are mandated in the century code on this too.
So.
I think, kind of, that's what Jamie's stating.
Yeah.
So let's, uh, have a motion to postpone this until further investigation. And.
I'll make the motion to postpone.
Okay. Jamie made the motion to postpone it?
I'll second.
Any, any further discussion?
Jen, I, I think we kind of looked at this before, so I can grab that again. I can take it to Todd, just cause I had started on this before and then shakeups happened in the office. Might as well.
And I do wanna, I do wanna add that I appreciate planning and zoning doing this work on it. But, um, we definitely need to have some more clarification and or.
I'm not opposed to anything planning and zoning added to it, it's just what we have in all the rest of the, if we're gonna do it, we might as well do it all at once.
Agreed. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. So that's tabled until we get more information. P N Z appointments. My gosh, I haven't messed up my piles, everything's been in order so far. Okay. We have three expired four-year. And one vacant, someone stepped off.
That was, uh, Maynard. They moved out of county.
Okay.
So, no longer eligible to sit because he doesn't live here anymore.
Okay, so we actually got a, a point.
Four.
Four.
Four, so. We should do the one, two-years separately.
Correct.
Yeah, I think we do the four-years first and then, I, I would do the four-year full terms first.
Yeah, I don't care, we can do the four-year first, so three. Any recommendations?
I would move to approve for the three-year expired, um, Kevin Hathner, Mike Esslinger, and Gerald Bieber.
Okay, who goes out again, Jamie? Kevin Hathner?
Mike Esslinger and Gerald Bieber.
And I'll second.
And Gerald Bieber.
Bieber.
Holy cow.
And Liza's second.
Jamie. Okay.
What would be three current, previous four-hundred positions are?
Uh, Mike Esslinger, Rodney Weigum, and Wes Klein are the three.
Of the expired ones, yeah.
Okay, was that a recommendation or a motion?
That was a motion.
Okay. Jamie made the motion to appoint those three, um, for four-year terms, Liza, you seconded that motion?
Correct.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Okay, those three will be notified that they have, uh, that they're appointed for four-year terms?
Does Jen do that, or does Carmen?
No, I.
I think, I think Carmen should.
Cause I put it in the.
All right.
And I'll make a motion to appoint Chris Renner to the two-year unexpired term.
All right, uh, that was Jamie.
I'll second it.
And Rick seconds, that was Chris Renner. I gotta write two-year. Any discussion?
I don't think anybody applied for full or, uh, unexpired, but.
That's what, like I didn't, when you're looking through, I don't see anybody.
I'm just saying that nobody, nobody distinguished, so I don't think it's an issue.
Okay.
Appointing.
I just pick and choose, you guys can move wherever you want.
Mm-hmm. All right, good, good, I'm glad you pointed that out, Travis. Okay, any further discussion on the two-year unexpired appointment? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Well, that was simple.
Appreciate everybody that applied, it's nice to actually have to choose.
Very nice.
Yeah. Yeah, and a good point, it's nice that we had so many that we actually had to choose some. That's not, doesn't happen too often. Okay, anything else, planning and zoning?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen.
I got a question after the meeting, I want to bring us up here without a good clock.
Okay, Western Plains. Aaron. Pronounce your last name for me?
O-Rada.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine if you don't remember that.
Yep, that's fine if you don't remember that, like we'll do this every year, that's okay.
Well, it's written down, I think he was hesitating on pronunciation.
I wasn't gonna try. Embarrass myself. Which one?
They do, yeah.
I keep moving over. I'm gonna have to put up. Fence. Fence, okay, uh, we all got it, go ahead.
Good morning, thank you for having me. I had Carmen pass around our twenty twenty-three annual report and that just discusses all the services we provided in our five-county region in twenty twenty-three. And you should have a copy of our twenty twenty-five proposed budget. Just to point out a few things and then we'll get down to the county request. So we are losing about six hundred thousand dollars in federal funding, the COVID funding for the most part has gone away. We have a couple of extensions on remaining funds, um but that isn't anything we will expect anymore past probably twenty twenty-five. And then to make up for that loss, we are going to try to increase our Medicaid reimbursement for some of our nursing programs and then um some of our non-federal grant funding has increased a little bit too. Also want to point out the opioid settlement funding, I do have an error in the twenty twenty-four budget column. I wrote down funding for Mercer County, but you guys had not approved that yet. Um if you guys still wanted to discuss that topic, we can set up another time to do so. And then down to the county allocation section, I do, I have asked for a seventy-two thousand dollar increase in the county allocation. For Mercer County, that would be about a fourteen thousand dollar increase from last year. Um I did my best to keep our expenses low, I was able to reduce our non-salary expenses by about ninety thousand dollars for twenty twenty-five. However, we are hoping to do a two percent raise for our employees. And then we estimated a large increase for health insurance, just not knowing what Indy Perez is going to do come July first of twenty twenty-five. So those are the major changes in our budget and I guess I would just ask for your consideration to approve the increase or the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand dollars, sorry, hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars for Mercer County's allocation for the twenty twenty-five budget. Um are there any questions?
And that would be based on the three point six five mill levy?
Yes.
Okay. And just for clarification for everybody here or listening, when we do these joint things, all the counties do the same mill levy.
Yes.
So it's across the board, so if the counties are in agreement, then everybody essentially does uh the equivalent of that mill levy within their county and that's why the prices are different, allocations are different, so um it's one of those areas where if the joint counties, um the majority of them agree to it, then everybody follows.
Yes. And we do have that joint board of county commissioners meeting set for August twentieth at ten AM. I will get connection info to Carmen well ahead of time, so you guys can plan on joining. You can also come to the office in Mandan if you are able to. And as long as everybody joins right at the start, it's about a five to ten minute meeting. We just always have a hard time getting a quorum, because I need a quorum of commissioners from each county and then a quorum of counties. And there's five counties, so there's nineteen people that I have to try to wrangle, so if you guys could write that down, I'd really appreciate it.
August twentieth at ten AM.
Yes. Carmen will get you more information too.
I'll email it out to you guys. Maybe I'll be even sooner than I always make you a copy.
August twentieth?
At ten AM.
I won't be able to make it.
I won't be able to either.
I joined via phone last time, like driving, I wasn't driving, but going down the interstate.
I guess it's on us.
Probably between Rick and Travis.
I need a quorum of you guys.
So Jamie.
And Jamie.
I think it could be.
The other three of us will have to be on that call.
It's very difficult and I mean, it's it's laid out that way in century code, I don't have any control over the, how that process works, so. But it has been a challenge every year, I think last year we met right at the start and it went really well and it was.
The time before was a bit interesting, like I had a call and they're like, Liza, like, I guess I'm pulling over and I did like what Jamie did.
Yeah, and I appreciated you doing that, because yeah, it's challenging, but um that's what we have to do.
And we'll make it work.
Thank you.
Did we have to make a motion to approve anything or is it just, we're accepting it to be in our running budget?
Right, oh yeah.
Put it in our budget.
Yeah.
So it'll be, whether we cut your funds or not, it'll be in the budget.
Yeah, I don't.
But I don't think we got a choice, do we?
I think we're kind of locked in on this stuff.
Yeah, if all the counties agree to it, then you're locked in on that one. And I don't know what happens on your guys' end, I only know what happens on my end, but.
Let's just say we don't.
Where, where's the, where do I see the increased amount approximately?
I have it highlighted in the bright yellow.
Yep, on the back side of the first page.
Got it. Okay. All right.
Do we need to have you for the opioid settlement, do we need to have her come back for that?
Right.
Did anybody talk to you?
I talked to Rachel and Rachel said unfortunately it doesn't fit with what she would need it for, so she thinks it's best to use Erin and have Erin utilize that funding.
Okay, so then do we wanna approve that or do we want to bring that on a different meeting?
Uh, can we, can, is the question I have.
Which funding?
The way of funding settlement.
That seventeen thousand seven fifty-nine, I mean, it was brought up, what, three months ago probably? Um but I guess it's not on today's agenda.
Right.
Um.
Well.
What the budget is.
Okay, I, I'm gonna ask the question this way, if, if that funding was received, are we, would we be approving that it goes into this line item in the budget? Is that what you're asking?
Well, we would be.
It would, well, it would stay, like, we had discussed it, seeing if our youth bureau could use it in any such way where Erin, they had a plan for it.
Okay.
And our youth bureau.
That's answering the question.
So it would, yes, stay in this line item.
Okay. Cause I was gonna say, we don't need to approve receiving money.
No, but we.
Okay, gotcha, I follow you.
We need to approve her being able to utilize it.
Well, and you will continue to receive the random checks for the next however many years for that too. So I think you guys also need to look into the future on how you're going to allocate that funding. Based on century code, it says that you're supposed to work with your local public health unit. Um and I had shared all of that with Carmen a while back, but.
You came and spoke to us.
Okay, yeah, that, that part I agree.
And I should have more information.
Where, where we put it, yes.
So let's just add it to next meeting since we didn't put it on this and we can.
That way we got it for sure.
Improve opioid, opioid.
Western Plains opioid settlement.
Yeah.
Do you need me to come back for that meeting?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay, if you change your mind.
Unless anybody else feels so, but I don't think so.
I'm always more than happy to come and hang out, but it's.
We're, we're happy to have you.
It's a dollar a month too, right away, seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine. Okay. All right.
Yep.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else unless you guys have further questions.
We're making it too easy on you.
Kinda. I had two meetings yesterday and they had a few more questions for me.
All right, I do appreciate the organized, what you have here, you went through it so fast that I had trouble keeping following, but thank you.
Yeah, definitely, and if you look at it later and you have questions, just give me a call, I mean, we're than happy to discuss, but we have to keep it organized so we can follow what we're doing too.
Okay, any further questions for her? All right, thank you.
Hey, thank you, have a good rest of your day.
Highway Department, what do we have here for the highway?
Do you wanna wait till ten and do a few of these other business items?
Others, yep.
Well, it's five more minutes, okay. What was your recommendation, go to other business?
How about recorder fees?
Yep, okay, may recorder fees, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the may recorder fees.
That was Jamie?
Yep.
Rick? Any discussion, the recorder fees were six thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty cents, just so it's on the recording. Any further discussion, hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Uh, Beulah Little People Preschool's raffle permit, do we even have?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't give you guys a copy.
I say, I don't see my copy.
It's just this, do you want copies from now on? Cause in the past we've not.
I don't.
But I can definitely do it if you want.
Does it say what the raffle's for?
Well, she does. But she, it's a document she has to put through the state to get approved. Site name Beulah Bay Campground.
Yeah, it goes through us, cause it's within the county, like it's Beulah Bay.
Just to give her permission to have a raffle for the preschool. I'll move to approve the raffle permit for
Do I have a second?
Little People's Preschool.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I feel like Jamie's selling raffle tickets soon.
Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick? Jean, aye, motion passed.
Just make sure you ask them.
Uh, tour visit, do, what, July twenty-fifth, Naco County tour visit, was there any information?
That was a reminder you wanted to put on.
Okay, thank you.
To remind everybody, July twenty-fifth, N D A C O will be here.
Do they have a timeframe?
Yes.
I believe it's ten o'clock and you guys had a copy of that last week, and I also emailed it to you.
I was gonna, I was gonna say ten, I just was very.
Ten, they'll only be here maybe two hours.
They, yeah, they said approximately two hours.
And I will not be here.
Jean, do you wanna do the nurse report? I'll move to approve the county nurse report.
Okay, go ahead, county nurses.
The county nurse report.
I'll second.
Holy cow. Jamie, Liza, any discussion on the county nurses quarterly report? Okay, hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick? Jean, aye, motion passed, got that.
Okay, I did put on there about that landfill audit expense. Uh, because it came to, I mean, they requested engineering fees for the landfill regarding, and it come to two thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents and I'm requesting to pay it through our audit account rather than the landfill. I'd move to approve paying the landfill audit expense of tw- two thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents out of that.
Do I have a second?
Liza's second. Out of the audit expense account?
We got all the particulars, I'm sorry, I'm, I am not making fun of anyone. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Uh, did that, that, a clean, a clean library twenty twenty-five budget?
Yeah, it's in there for you guys to read.
Okay.
I, she emailed it and just for you guys to look at.
So it's just for review?
Just information, yeah.
Okay.
Use for twenty-five budget, right?
Okay. Uh request to sell vehicles.
They have thirty, the sheriff's department has a request to sell four vehicles. They have a bid of thirty-six thousand um and they were putting out on bids and if they don't receive any higher bids, they would like to permission to sell at that price.
Is each one at thirty-six or?
No, there was a total of thirty-six for four vehicles.
Okay.
Six, eight, ten and twelve.
That's the requested minimum bids?
Pardon?
That's the requested floor, so to speak?
No, they already have a bid for that.
Oh, they already have a bid for that.
They need to go out and, and put it out on, if anyone can match that or go over it, they'll take it. If not, we would like a, a request that we would allow them to sell it at that price. They have never got them that high before.
Right, well, we have to, we have to put it out on bids.
He's putting it on bids, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it was in the paper, yeah, I was gonna say it was in the paper things.
Did it state, it stated right?
Yeah, so we can't accept anything until it.
Just the permission to sell it.
The permission to sell them, yes, we, that we can authorize.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the vehicles.
I'll second, it's Liza.
Any further discussion that we didn't already have? Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye, go ahead and.
Uh, pickup repair.
Put your vehicles off of bids.
We have a pickup repair at Hazen Motors, uh, they want it, uh, transmission out on one of the pickups.
That's on the highway department.
It's on the highway department.
We're not there yet.
No, we're in others.
Oh, I thought you wanted the gravel, oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Well, if you wanna cover.
But it is ten oh one now, so we can't go to the road department.
I guess I'm ahead of myself, sorry.
Nope. Anyway, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Bowman, go ahead.
It's fine, but we already started, so anyways, pickup repair, um, on the gravel highway department, um, they have a, I think it's a twenty nineteen Chevy pickup, uh, transmission went out, it's uh, seven thousand dollars and they need a approval to uh get it repaired. And I'd make a motion to, that we repair the pickup because the pickup is worth more than the repair, uh, repair bill.
Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, any further discussion?
Would any of this be under warranty if it's a nineteen?
Twenty nineteen?
Depends on the mileage, huh?
Yeah, mileage.
It's like a hundred and thirty thousand on it.
Probably not then, okay, I just. My question.
Is there, is there budget room for it, Rick?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh, this is to repair the transmission on the twenty nineteen, what vehicle?
It was, it was the one that Elroy had.
Okay.
Tw- I believe it's a twenty nineteen Chevy pickup, cause they're doing the bad hazen motor, they'll prove it.
And hearing no further discussion, Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Okay. Still don't have anyone here from the highway department?
Yes, one of the gravel exploration.
Okay, gravel exploration, where are we on that?
We have a contract from Terricon to do another exploration south of Hazen and uh come in at about fifteen to twenty holes again and that bill came in at sixty-three hundred dollars and we needed approval for that. There is an existing this one was an existing one, uh, uh, pit and they wanted to see if it's quality and how much is there yet.
Okay, we had them do a north of zap, but that turned up.
That was, there was gravel there, but not enough to make it.
Okay.
And Rick, you said this is the Terricon contract that was signed end of June, correct? Like that's, that's who's doing this.
Signed six twenty-four, this was a different one, not the one.
Okay, yeah.
This would be a new contract.
This is the second one.
Or twenty, I was looking at Elroy's, June twenty-fifth.
And we're kind of in a bind, we gotta find gravel, so this is like.
This one is south of Hazen, there's uh, they said it was in a, the landowner said it was an existing one there that many years ago and they, they think there's gravel there and we thought we would go look there. He requested the board again rather than, we have another one that uh coming up, but uh that one we're gonna do with a backhoe. Probably after the second cutting, it has off, it's in a hay field.
That one we're gonna do ourselves.
Correct.
Okay. I, I know I don't have a problem with this, cause we gotta find gravel and we might spend sixty-three hundred dollars and no gravel, but we, we gotta find gravel. We gotta go looking, so.
So I'm making a motion to move this contract.
Do I have a second?
Sixty-three hundred, correct?
Sixty-three hundred.
I'll second.
Okay, who's second?
Jamie.
Okay, now for the discussion. Okay, hearing none, Rick?
Aye.
Tr- uh, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Jean, I. Uh, anything else under the highway department?
No, so I won't bug you anymore. Get out of line here.
No, you're in line now.
No, I'm on a line now.
Okay.
Landfill dirt hauling?
Pebble Beach people are not here. Landfill policy.
Landfill dirt hauling? No policy.
Nope, just the dirt hauling.
So Candy's requested to have, um, Greg Pearl and Lakeview Services come in and help her haul some dirt. Um, they're looking at potentially next week. Her loader is still down until July twelfth at the earliest. Um, but they're just not getting anywhere hauling dirt, and so it would be, I believe she said a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour for seven hours a day roughly. It would come out to be about three thousand dollars. But she just really needs some help, and the road department's busy hauling gravel, and they were gonna try and come out and help her bust up some dirt so that it can be hauled with their dozer, so I would like to make a motion to let Greg Pearl and Lakeview Services haul dirt for the landfill.
Okay, Jamie made a motion. Do I have a second to that motion to haul dirt?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, do we have a, a dollar amount, or did he bid it? Are we bidding it?
It'd be a hundred and fifteen, I think she said a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour. They're looking at seven-hour days, potentially four days. She thought it would come out close to about three thousand dollars.
Kind of one of those things we have to do to stay in compliance.
Yeah, right.
I know, but I'm saying, I hate to just have an open checkbook here. No one has any idea how much we're spending, and if we get to certain.
I think she's not gonna technically know until it's done, because they may get done sooner, they may get done.
Sure.
It depends on what her.
And I just wanted to make sure that we're not.
No, I.
And I know it's not even close to the dollar amount, but where we'd have to actually get it, so.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So why don't we approve it as, as the per-hour price and the per-hours, and then you can see where, you know, you wouldn't have to have the total numbered in there, but.
Yeah, she was just requesting to allow them to do it, so it's.
Rather, I mean, to answer Jean's question.
So like, roughly three thousand dollars would be probably like twenty-six hours of hauling, so that's like four days, roughly, which is what she thought.
And then if something came up, Candy would bring it back to us?
Yeah.
Okay, I just.
Because if she's expecting the loader to come back the twelfth, we'll have another meeting shortly thereafter, so if she needs additional, we can, we can.
The cylinder for the loader wasn't, it was like a specialty thing, so that's why it's taking.
I'm just, I, I, you know, I just, I, I under, I understand it all, what we gotta do and the amounts, but it's just a little bit that we're gonna approve basically an open checkbook. What's our state's attorney say about that?
Why don't we just say for a max of three thousand dollars right now? I can amend my motion to say a max of three thousand dollars for right now.
Well, if, if we're okay with it, the way it is, the way the motion originally is made, then it shouldn't be a problem, but, uh, I don't wanna get into something here where.
I have a couple of questions on this. Is this a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour for just the machine or the machine and the operator?
I don't know, she just said trucking, I guess.
Typically, there's, but we've been bidding by the hour, they've been coming with machine and the operator.
I'd say usually it's both.
Okay, uh, because they also rent equipment by the hour off of the, the Hobbs meter, which is timed off usually the, the oil pump, uh, whatever hours it runs.
It's not even that she needs just the loader, she doesn't have the truck, we don't have, the landfill doesn't have the trucks, and the road department doesn't have time at the trucks too.
Okay.
Okay. I, I would like to see that we amend the motion and state something to a maximum amount of like four thousand dollars.
I'll amend my motion to say a max of four thousand dollars.
So we have something concrete.
I'll second.
Okay, can I, um?
Legally, I'm more comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Jamie.
What did you say?
I seconded her amendment for the four thousand dollar max, because this is separate from the original.
Okay, but here's the thing, let's do with the original.
That was Jamie and Travis.
What was the original, Jamie?
A hundred and fifteen dollars.
Tell me what your original motion was.
Hundred and fifteen dollars an hour.
Per hour? Did you include everything, a hundred and fifteen dollars per hour for four days, approximately three thousand dollars?
Three thousand.
That's what originally I heard.
Yes.
And that was your original motion, and then?
Yes.
Travis seconded that.
Yes.
Now you're amending it to move to approve hiring Greg Pearl to haul gravel at a hundred and fifteen dollars per hour as needed for a max of four thousand dollars?
It's not Greg Pearl and Lakeview Services.
It's Greg Pearl and Lakeview Services.
Okay.
And it's not gravel, it's dirt.
Okay.
Okay, okay, then let me correct this before you guys go on. So you said it's Greg Pearl and?
Lakeview Services.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, now is the hauling at one fifteen per hour?
She just said.
For the max of four thousand, that amended, now we're looking at the amendment.
Right, I mean, she just said for a max of four thousand. She didn't say the one fifteen or anything.
Right, you just say maximum four thousand dollars.
Sure.
Okay. That was Jamie's amendment.
And I seconded it.
Why is this seconded it?
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none on the amendment. Jamie?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Jean, I. On the amendment, Jamie?
Hi.
Travis?
No, we aren't, you're gonna do the original now.
Yeah?
The motion has amended, and Jamie said I.
Original motion.
I'll say I.
Travis? Liza?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Jean, I. Yeah, you have to, if the original fails, the whole thing fails.
I knew what he was saying, I just wanted to make sure it was accurately reflected as to which one we're doing.
I'm more comfortable with that. Now let's, all right. Um, that's our landfill policy.
Or what?
Ten-twelve.
Do you want to take a recess until the ten-thirty, or what do you want to do? Otherwise, we've got portfolio updates. This is only other business.
Yeah, we can take a recess. Let's do a recess until ten-thirty. Holy cow.
Look at his cruise today.
I s- I suppose, because our next.
Or we can do the portfolios real quick. We could do portfolios.
Let's take a, uh, a five-minute recess, then we can start portfolios. Ten thirteen, so.
So ten eighteen on her reason. All right.
I don't know how to replay, because I don't think you want to see.
Okay, well, what I'm gonna do then, is I'm gonna write it off.
Write it off.
I don't know if those are documents, you know, if you see someone, just let me know.
No, I didn't, I will, I'll.
What I do is I go back and I listen to the tape, and I try to get it, but I totally did miss that Lakeview Services. So that was big that we done that. Because Greg Pearl is one, and Lakeview Services is another.
They have trucks.
Okay.
And that's what the road department's been using, that's why she.
Okay, good, good, no, I, I, I just want to get her down.
She's there, we need to have her, she's there.
Okay. Okay. Well, or Wanda, I sent it to Wanda, and she did respond back to Travis and me saying that, um, so that's, and I did not give them a copy of that. He did, yes, he did. I got a copy here. So. Yeah, and then, uh, one of the tax structure, but it had P and Z codes and amounts. Really? Yes. Yes. Okay, hey.
Are you sure that it's a sign?
Signature is here.
I don't think there's anything else.
July thirty, right?
Yes, it is.
You got that right.
Saying that again.
Yeah, I, I know.
Hey, Travis, I did not make a copy of your email. I just.
Yeah, well, I, I emailed.
That everybody got it, so I did, just so you're aware.
Is Jim around?
He is.
Yeah.
Give him a quick call, see if he can.
I told him I was calling off his cell phone, going off official time today, he was gonna do it after.
Okay.
Oh.
I hope we're not still here.
I think we can reconvene, I'll call the meeting back to order, or a minute early, but that's fine. Oh, no, we're not.
Not great on time.
Portfolio updates. I'll make mine real quick. I have none. Okay.
If you want me to go?
Go ahead.
Uh, we, sheriff's department, we talked about that, the road department, we're hauling gravel yet, um, we're, uh, got tons of roads that are just been, I mean, it's been an ongoing process, and I don't know if we'll, we probably won't even get it all this year yet. Um, fair board, we're almost ready. We'll be working through the weekend to get everything going, and by Wednesday, we'll be fair time. And, uh, we have a, oh, I stopped a couple of things with, um, extension office, and, um, we got a, a meeting coming up there, so there's not, not lots of reports, other than I have a question for Carmen at some point about some, um, I'll talk to her about it, about how the budget works on what they were looking at, and the other one was a P and Z is, um, I think we discussed the last one, we don't have, and I haven't had another one since, and that's what I have.
Ready for me?
Go ahead. Travis?
Yeah, um, so, uh, we passed out the library budget, take a look at that. Um, I know we had, I had said that we were looking at possibly going down on the, on the middle levy, but after getting notice from Riverdale on the future location, or if we'll be able to maintain that location, we are a little unsure what, if we're gonna have to pay rent, and what that would be, and a few other things, so we're holding it for now. Um, we're hoping to get some more information here this month or next month, so when it comes to final budget, we'll hopefully have um, those details worked out. As far as the land use department, um, I, I sent out, we'll talk about it, um, further on in the meeting about budget requests, but I think a review on, on our, um, current codes and how they're structured, we're also, you know, we've had that gravel one come up, so just kind of thinking out in the future, what should we be doing, how should we be maintaining our codebooks and our, our maps and zoning stuff? Um, should be a discussion that we have on that, um, day later this month when we talk, um, preliminary budget stuff. And then as far as P and Z, we've covered, um, what came up at the last meeting. And then, everything as far as Lewis and Clark, no changes there, and those are all the updates I have.
That's it?
That's it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you done?
I'm done.
Not that's it, that's.
I didn't take it that way.
Well, I was always told that's, doesn't sound good. Liza?
Yeah, first thing is that Alex, I'm sorry, Alice did accept the EM combination HR position officially on June twenty-fifth, and I had her drop paperwork, so that way we would have an official in her HR file as well. Then, um, almost all the rest of my boards or departments are actually working on their budgets currently. We have a Zoom meeting for the, um, ambulance board on Monday, the eighth, at six PM. And then I have, um, my airport board this Tuesday at six-thirty, and we'll be discussing budgets on both of those. Um, they had the fly-in this past weekend, and it seemed like it went really well. I was there for a short time. Everybody seemed like they were having a good time, and it seemed like it went very well. Uh, I didn't hear anything from Dawn yet. I'm sure she's working on her budget just like everybody else, and Alice is for the HR EM combination one too. That's all I have.
Jamie?
Um, nothing really, um. LAPC, Alice had her first meeting last week, though was unable to attend. Otherwise, really, uh, there's an opening at the landfill. Candy's, the weather's just still not being kind, so, as we all know, so. And Jim's been pretty quiet, and he's gonna fix the clock this afternoon. All the rest were in the middle of head meetings before last meeting. That's all I got.
That's all, okay. Well, we're through that in a hurry. Um, Pebble Beach people, are y'all here, or you expecting someone else yet?
Jennifer's.
Jennifer's second.
Okay. Uh, commissioner requested twenty-twenty-five budget items. Anybody have anything?
I just, um, emailed out to all the commissioners some of the things that, that I was looking at. I didn't have numbers on all of them, but just items to consider. I think, um, the biggest one was the first one. Carmen and I and Wanda were kind of communicating back and forth on the, um, budget for mental health. Did you get a number from Wanda? Did she think that was reasonable? I don't know.
Um, we're gonna talk.
Okay.
She had emailed me, and, yeah, we're gonna talk.
Okay, and, and as far as the other ones?
Definitely I'll let you know, Travis, what she says.
Right.
I mean, I would agree, Travis, switching roles, it's continuing to be a bigger problem all the time, and we're continuing to fight where we can get individuals for facilities and, and whatnot, and resources, and, I mean, last week it was a, a nine-hour deal just for one day, just for one individual, so.
Is that something that we look at with West Plains, or is that something separate?
It, it, part of it is that for those type of hearings, our state's attorney isn't able to, you have to contract it out through another agency. So part of it is that for some of those hearings, you have to have it contracted out, it's, you have to do it that way. So the monies for that contract out add up pretty quickly, and we're having more and more mental health cases, so that's becoming an issue. We want to make sure we have a, uh, line item where we have set aside for that.
What do we have? Because it says our current budget is light in this area.
I didn't know what the budget was. I, it was a comment that, talking with Mark Keford, that he thought it should be something that we look into if we have enough in our budget.
So, uh, now it's gonna be my question. Do we have a line item for mental health?
And it's under the clerk of court. That's what I understood from Wanda, and she gave me the line item. Now, you guys, as the county nurse, or not the county nurse, but you know what I mean, the sheriff, is that the only place you get monies for this mental health? I mean, that's where you have to go through, right? Is the clerk of court?
Yeah, it's all like one child, little files, and then it goes through the clerk of courts, but I don't know if any monies comes out of Todd's.
I.
It should not be coming out of.
Level shoot clerk of court.
This should not be coming out of the state's attorney budget, because this is inadventive offense, people can't afford their own attorney, who are being subjected to a mental health.
So I think just out of Wanda's, yes.
Okay, so I'll talk to Wanda about it and.
Yeah, I just, he talks to me.
She wanted to know too what you guys were thinking, because she didn't want to hand in her budget before we're gonna raise it. She wanted to know, too, what you guys were thinking, because she didn't want to hand in her budget before we're gonna raise it, and she wants that included.
Right.
Well, and I get, speaking of raising it, there's a few other departments that have made comments about they turned in their budgets already, but then HR had sent out stuff, and so now that their budget they turned in does not reflect.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we have the option to.
Yes, they do, absolutely. Anything time before.
Because you, yeah, they. Okay, I'll, I'll send a few your way then.
Okay, good, because I need a few days before the 17th to get it all together, but absolutely, yeah. And I've already have a couple, too, that I'm working.
And I had no.
I would like to see, I know that you've nicely put it into a spreadsheet, but I. I, okay, I want everybody's handwritten, like original, original.
And that is exactly what we're starting with, and that's it.
Okay, perfect.
Just what they give you.
Okay.
Right, and just let departments know, if, if you already turned something in, that's, that's not final.
If you could, because it's come up from a few different departments now that they were concerned, because they turned them in already, but then other stuff came up after.
No, they can.
And they want it to accurately be reflected.
They can resubmit it, because e- either way, it, it's not final until the commission finalizes it, and we can change anything in there that's needed, so I would prefer that those departments turn in any changes that they come up with. So, just so that departments know that. Don't, don't hold back with it, no.
Okay, I will send them your way.
Any other budget item you want to talk about?
I have a few, but I'm gonna email Carmen. I have a few, but I'm gonna email Carmen. I gotta find the correct verbiage and.
Yeah, I just thought this would be a way to start the process and, and get it included, and then we all sit and discuss it when we go through the preliminary budget, if we want to change anything.
Everybody knows, we, like Travis did, emailed out to all the commission and me, and then we.
Okay.
There you go. That's all I got on that, so.
Are you all here now?
Yeah.
We're about two minutes early. We're going by this, because if you go by that, you've got about almost 10 hours to wait.
Or 10 hours.
Or, yeah.
12 hours.
12 hours later.
10 hours early.
And if it's okay with you, we're okay. We can get started on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have anything you'd like to start out with?
Um, Jess, I'd like to go over the revisions that we made to the proposals since the last meeting on the variance approval. We changed the setbacks. Instead of 75 feet from the paved road, we changed that to 85.
It used to be 150 before, right?
150 was in the.
Our code is 150.
Gotcha, okay.
It's 150 from the center line, and now you're saying 85 from the center line.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Um, and then we modified the setback from the core land to two feet. And then on the agreement, we changed it from being a conveyance of Pebble Trail to the county as being an easement to the county, and Mr. Casper would maintain any liability that would go along with it as well as any maintenance responsibility. So, it takes that off of the county. And then I also included some drawings that an architect had done before, showing what these setbacks mean. So that you can see why we're requesting the variance that we are, because with the 150, it just, it, it makes it so you cannot have a residence there. Unfortunately, we're not able to get one for the 85. But it would be slightly smaller buildable area than the 75-foot setback that we included.
And I see our state's attorney sitting right up front. Did you have a comment, or any input, or?
I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. My I, I'm still one who's very stubborn on the variance on the setback, but there are four other commissioners here. So, what I would like to proba- propose is if the commission allows a variance, that we put some conditions on this variance. And one of them is access to this property, that it doesn't just get placed wherever you feel like. I think the access to the property should be way on the west side, right off the curve. It'd be limited to that. Basically, parallels the property line, which I think on the west side is the core property. I think it does a north and west, if I'm correct. I would like to see that the property owner put a guardrail on there. And this is if a variance is allowed. If the rest of the commission wants to grant that 85-foot variance, or whatever they say, 100-foot, that the property owner put a guardrail and pay for the guardrail around that curve to prevent vehicles from flying off that curve into the private property, because now at 85 feet, you're gonna be very close. I'd also like to see a like a chain link fence put up at a distance off the center line. I don't know if it would be 85 feet or something, some distance off there, to prevent debris, children, pets from getting up onto the road, because we're getting close to the road now.
Can the landowner put a guardrail along the road?
No, the guy, the landowner would pay for the guardrail. The county would put the guardrail on. What's your concern? Like I said, these are just my feelings. Because when, when you start getting that close to the, to the road, and I really would like to see call it a security fence, barrier fence, chain link fence, to prevent, you know, pets, animals, kids, children. Because if someone builds there, there's no, we don't, we don't know. We can't control. We can't say, well, you can buy this property, but you can't have children. Or even their visitors. And they kick a ball, and it flies up onto the road, and then they go running out there, because there's a lot of traffic there during the summer. So, I'd like to see some preventative measures put up. That's my input. Pretty quiet.
I'm, I'm processing what you just said.
Say this, like, I guess I disagree with you, Gene.
Do you Todd, do you see any issues with the easement portion of this, as opposed to us actually owning the land? Do you see any issues with that?
Can you repeat the question one more time for having a?
Do you see any issues with this changing now to an easement, as opposed to the county actually owning the land?
It changes it considerably, because if the county owns it, we're buying the liability whether we want it or not.
Right, but if it's an easement?
If it's an easement, it's that allows anybody to go in there. It's a public easement. So, the county's not really getting anything other than we have a landowner just gonna say, hey, we're gonna let people go down to Pebble Beach. And yes, Pebble Beach has been used for eons. There may have been somebody in this room who illegally consumed beer on that beach. I don't want to point fingers, but
But this isn't putting any liability on the county?
This isn't, it specifically is saying that we are not liable.
And then we don't have to maintain it or anything?
Correct. In the agreement itself, we added two provisions. One says that Casper shall maintain responsibility for any liability that may be related to Pebble Beach Trail, and that Casper shall be responsible for any maintenance to Pebble Beach Trail to keep it in the same condition it's currently in.
The two responsibilities by accepting this agreement that the county has is, number one, is provide approach off of the county paved road and/or Pebble Beach Trail for both tracks to A and to B. And work with the owners, so they got a reasonable access. Pretty simple language. As Jennifer would ask too often, our colleagues want nitpick, generate rat killer contracts where by the time the people get out in the field, they have no freaking idea what actually was intended. This is nice and open. Can it cause problems? Yeah, but these are problems that can be worked out in field. And the second thing is that the county is waiving any right to enact rules or regulations to prohibit or inhibit the development of track 2A or track 2B, other than such rules and regulations currently in place. So, what we have here, this can be accepted even if the county doesn't grant the variance, because it says by the, by the rules that are currently in place. So, that separates the two issues completely. And I was nervous about us selling a variance in any, any way, shape, or form, because now we're into some legal gray area that Jennifer and our colleagues and me, we've, we've made a pretty good amount of money over the years, and will in the future with things like that. So, this takes this, we want to take a step by providing an access, an approach. When we say access, it doesn't mean we gotta build a paved superhighway right up to where they're gonna build on 2A and 2B. We gotta get an approach across our county right away. That's it.
Do we get to decide where the approach is, or does the landowner?
So, we put the language specifically in there that you have to work together and be reasonable about it, so that Casper can't come in, or the new landowner, and say it has to be here, we don't care what you say, and vice versa.
And I feel like that's appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I got reservations with the part about not inhibiting anything, is because of, you know, that portion of this thing is I have.
But the qualifying language that Jennifer put in here, and her and I have talked off and on, to kind of get an idea where we could find some middle ground if, that if the county accepts, is not gonna put either party in a bad situation. This is how lawyers are supposed to work together. Don't always see it. So, in a way, I'm complimenting myself, but I'm doing that by complimenting Jennifer for being a good attorney who's reasonable.
And all that provision means is you can't come up with a new law to put further restrictions on it. The restrictions that are currently in place remain in place. You just can't come up with a new law that, like, rezones this, and makes it so they can't build on it after you approve this. That's all that that is.
Which the actual effect, whether you grant that or not, it'd be arbitrary and concretious to all of a sudden say, no, lot two, whether it's A or B, now has to be strictly agriculture. Act, you've already put it in place for development. You got development all the way around it. So, the county's not giving up anything of legitimate controls, that it has a legitimate governmental issue or interest.
So, you don't see any concerns with the agreement?
No, I don't.
Any concerns with the variance?
As far as the variance? My job as your state's attorney is to tell you what's legal, what's not legal. I don't see any legal with a variance approval. It then goes to the natural turn of things as far as business with the county, and the commission decides whether or not this is something they wish to grant. You can take into all the considerations that have been talked about. Time sure have been thought about.
Well, I get, I see the 85-foot setback that got changed, because right away is 75 feet, so it's kind of.
We don't have right away there. We have an easement. 66 total.
Well, I would make a motion to accept the agreement between James Casper and Mercer County as presented.
Well, just for clarification, my client wants the variance approval first.
I'll make a motion to accept the variance approval.
And I'll second.
I thought Liza did.
No, she said the agreement, but, so Liza's gonna retract her motion.
Okay.
She didn't say that, but that's what she wants.
I didn't hear her.
You're fired.
Okay, trying to get order back. Would it, would it, would it, Jamie?
The variance.
And then I seconded.
Okay. And you're all okay with just the way it's worded? You don't want, no other conditions?
I'm, I'm fine with how the variances is written. I think when we look at variances, we should look at the specific properties in place. It's a singular thing. It doesn't really set precedence. It's should be taken on the merit of that piece of property that's requesting the variance, so.
I think it needs to be like a case by case that you, I mean, every, I may have a square piece of land, but this is a triangle, so you kind of.
Okay. So, as far as access, that's gonna be worked out between the county road department and the property owner, so to speak. Commission in the end.
Reasonably.
Yep.
It's gonna be a mutual agreement.
And that's our normal process when anybody requests access to a property off of a county road. There is a approach permit that the road department goes through, and then we have the final say whether that's granted or not.
Okay, because I have a concern about that, that we end up with approaches all over the place, so.
And that's actually part of the agreement, not the variance?
Correct.
Okay, well, I got a motion in a second to accept the agreement as printed.
No, for the variance.
The variance. Okay, the variance. Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Nay.
Jean, nay, motion passed. Okay, got your variance. What's the next?
The agreement.
No, the agreement.
A move to accept the agreement between James Casper and Mercer County.
And the agreement is just the Pebble Beach Trail?
The easement.
The easement for the trail.
For the trail.
Right.
And that includes the language on the approach that you were talking about?
I will second that.
Oh, did we have a motion?
Liza moved to approve.
Sorry. Discussion. Fine. Okay.
Jennifer, is this the official copy? I just noticed one typo. If, if we want the official copy changed, it's fine.
We can fix the typo.
I don't really care. I don't care if nobody else cares.
Okay, any other?
That's what I'm wondering, what typo did?
What typo?
Any further discussion on the agreement? Hearing none? Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Uh, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick? And Jean, nay, motion passed. Okay.
Thank you. Do you want me to send over the new agreement with that?
I don't care what anybody wants.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then have, did you ever sign up?
I just found one in the variance.
Get it to our state's attorney.
It's because it's the same word repeated over. You just, your, your mind knows it, so.
Yep.
And it's still the real word.
Yeah, yeah.
It's only because I drew a line next to it that I even noticed.
Okay. We can do the next one. County office's combination separation and rezasination.
Jean, before you go on to that, I saw Wanda came in. Did she have any comments on the 1040? Because we had jumped ahead in the agenda on that. I just didn't know if Wanda had anything.
She might, yeah. It's important to her.
Because we did the 1040 before the 1030.
For the mental health contractors.
Okay.
That should be in your budget. Right, because then it doesn't look right for the state's attorney to be hiring the defense council for mental health people without petitioning on the app of the Department of.
Right, 'cause then it doesn't look right for the state's attorney to be hiring the council for mental health people without petitioning on the app of the parties of the county.
What is your budget right now for that, Wanda, do you know?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, wow.
And actually for two thousand twenty-three, we spent ninety-five hundred dollars on attorney fees. And in two thousand twenty-four, we've spent already seventy-nine hundred dollars. So, I'm way over again. I would think that we could move it up to ten thousand. I think twenty-five is too much.
I didn't, he, that was just a suggestion. I had no idea what her budget was on it, so.
I could live with ten thousand.
And the thing is, is that health are like criminal files. The past tells us some things, but one of the things the mental health past tells me is that, and it comes in waves, is what I've seen historically through handling these type of cases since nineteen eighty-eight. We'll go six, nine months, none, and then we'll get a wave, four, five, six, seven. Right now, we've got a little bit of a wave. We have two, three of them going at one time.
Do we wanna look at maybe fifteen, just 'cause you've spent seventy-nine hundred already and we're halfway through the year? Just say that doubles, but then fifteen versus ten?
I think probably a safer number.
Well, I'm just looking at ninety-five hundred and twenty-three dollars. You're at ten or better already. And if you go at least twelve, five, or fifteen, so you'd be, 'cause you're not gonna do it.
Yeah, it sounds like one's gonna go out and buy a piece of, that's why health, you look at the budget.
Well, it, it's, it sounds like several commissioners are recommending that you put in your budget fifteen and.
At least for the preliminary and then we can talk about.
And then we can take a look at it.
We don't vote on that here now.
No.
So, you can put in what you, which you want, but of course fifteen is recommended, so don't feel bad putting that in. But when we do finalize the budget, we could adjust that also, so understand that. So, even if you put in ten and the rest of the commission feels it should be fifteen, we, we can, it's not even really an amendment. We just adjust it accordingly for the final budget, so. But I would recommend you've got, it sounds like about five commissioners recommending that you make it fifteen. Just understand you don't have to.
And we just kind of, before you came in, we were talking about any departments, if there was any changes, we're willing to take those at any time, just so that Carmen's got time to update them in the preliminary, but even when we have our department head meeting, if there's any modifications, we'll still accept or still entertain those.
Because we, we understand you people can miss things, so just, that's for all departments. You can miss something, you know, just bring it to Carmen's attention. It'd just be nice that every department doesn't have a change every week. I mean, that could get tedious, but some things come up and understand that.
But with these people who are suffering from mental illness, it is heartbreaking because the actual treatment is a nuisance. I've seen many since I've been here. And I've seen in the past, it's no surprise, they get a handle on the mental health issue. Treating it the same way and all of a sudden, one morning they wake up, the body's not accepting the chemicals, the processing, the medication the way it should be, and we're back to the races.
Well, we're actually kind of looking at trying to meet with the CEOs of the like Bismarck hospitals because we can get everything all set up here within the county, but then we get to a medical facility and we hit a major roadblock and they don't wanna accept these individuals if they have charges or they have, it's been nothing. So, we've been working with West Central and we're gonna try and facilitate that meeting so that we can hopefully prevent some of these charges by not.
Or at least have a place to take them, but they're gonna get rejected. That's the biggest problem.
That's what we've been facing and so.
But then back to the budgetary circumstance, when you've got an attorney to represent them, it creates more time on their behalf because trying to get the folks in, get them stabilized enough where the attorney can have a conversation with them. And this attorney can't just say, "Well, doc, when, when so-and-so is stabilized enough that you think I can talk to him, give me a call and then we'll talk to him." Mark Pfeifer has taken a lot of these. He's done a great job and I tell you what, he's as stingy as spending those hours to bill the county as any taxpayer would be. If we put in the fifteen and we only need twelve next year or eight next year, well, I've never seen a taxpayer complain when we don't spend all that's in the budget for something. The other way around? Yeah.
Well, it's, that's not right to do a budget, budget, you know, seventy-five percent below what you're actually gonna have to spend. That, that, you're not doing your budget any, any fairness either. So, yeah, we should, it definitely needs an adjustment. Okay? Sorry about that, Wanda. We were jumping ahead of time.
Sorry, Jean, I just saw her walk in, so I didn't know if she had something to add to it.
That's important. You've got some numbers, that's great.
I appreciate that. That's why there's five of us, not one.
Thanks for looking into that, Wanda, too.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Well, sometimes if a person from Mercer County goes down to Jamestown for whatever reason and they get into trouble and they get committed, Mercer County is responsible for the attorney fees for that case, even though it happened in Jamestown. They're a resident of Mercer County. We have to pay for their attorney fees. And it's usually around two hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah, they got down there more expensive than the two volunteers we have up here. When a local attorney has to chase to Jamestown.
Yeah.
Not just the expense, but these contract attorneys aren't getting rich on these. In fact, honestly, they're losing money. So, that, four and a half hours off and back, no, off and back, well, like six hours. They could be billing and working on some other clients making money. I'm thankful that we have people who do this.
Okay, anything else, Wanda?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks, Wanda.
Thank you. Okay. County officer combination separation and redesignation. I brought that forward. I would like to have the commission do a preliminary resolution. And I've got it worded here for you. It's been resolved by the Mercer County Commission. Whereas the Mercer County Commission redesignates the elective offices of the auditor, treasurer, and recorder as appointed. And whereas, Sentry Code eleven ten two two one provides the Board of County Commissioners, made by resolution, adopted preliminary resolution incorporating a proposed plan for redesignating an elective county office as appointed, subject to the right of referendum. And whereas the job duties are quite extensive for each office and be it further resolved, that appointment of each office shall be made by the Mercer County Commission. And this is, um. And I included a, uh, the North Dakota Sentry Code on it and the state, all the counties in the state and what they have as elected, appointed. And we appoint like our clerk of court and our, um.
Tax equalization?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tax director, veteran service, county coroner, emergency manager. So, that's why I didn't list the rest. These are the only three left in the Sentry Code that we as a county commission can appoint. We cannot, as per Sentry Code, appoint the sheriff. That has to stay elected and the state's attorney. That has to stay elected. So, that's why I did not include those because by Sentry Code, we can't appoint, appoint them. They have to stay elected.
Couple things to address in the legal standpoint. Jean is correct that eleven ten point two dash oh one says the county may allow local citizens to permit the county, county, or the public make these changes. That's saying chapter eleven ten point two dash oh two discusses the method of how this is to be done. I think the most important thing that I would ask each commissioner to read this entire chapter, it's not very long. There's only five individual statutes in that whole chapter. But under eleven ten point two dash oh three, it deals with the analysis required, the contents of the plan, and the limitation. Under subsection four of the presence of cited statute. The plan may not propose to diminish the term of office for which a current county officer was elected. He goes on further. So, if the commission would pass this, those three that are designated in that would fill out their terms.
Yes.
And then if you look at that, um, in two, the eleven ten point two oh two, the board can do this, it's subject to the board review. The board has to do notice and public hearings and things of that sort. There's a couple of options. So, as your state's, my recommendation is, before the board takes any action on this, let the whole chapter be read individually so that you can understand it individually. And of course, if you have questions, you can contact me. You can bring the questions to another commission meeting or address those at the meeting. One thing that I am going to be in trial, I believe, for the next county commission meeting.
And just. And I know I've read this chapter extensively and I think I got about two attorneys in the room right now, so they love language. And it is not as complicated as the chapter even reads. I mean, there's a lot of verbiage in here. The, um, even under eleven ten two, in a basic nutshell, the commission can change them from elective to appointed. Eleven two two, basically states that the only, what I read out of there is we gotta hold public hearings and community forums or, and as it says, or other suitable means to disseminate information, receive suggestions, and comments, and encourage public discussions with the purpose of conclusions with the plan. That doesn't even mean that, that those suggestions and or recommendations, we, we just have to have them and listen to what the public has to say. This resolution then becomes effective within the two years of when we would adopt the resolution. It doesn't make it final on the day you vote on it. What it does, it starts the process. And it just means that within, where does it state? Thirty days, it has to be published. The preliminary resolution has to be published. And then after that, we have our, you have, yeah, you have your public meetings and then any time after that, you do a final on the resolution to adopt it. There are a lot of, a lot of counties moving that direction already, or getting.
Speaking of other state's attorneys, the majority of the counties that went this way, maybe simply because they don't have anyone that wants to run for the office. That was motivation for other counties throughout the years. And in the Sentry Board, if we have an elected position, if we want to send this duly elected, then the commission can elect the fellow.
Well, I'm willing to table it until the next meeting before I ask for a, a vote on it. We can do that and put it off till the next meeting. So, I got this information out to my commissioners so they can look it over if they want, unless some of them feel differently even today, that's fine. But since I brought it up, I'm willing to postpone it till the next meeting. Any objections?
I don't have an objection. I mean, I've read a lot of these things before, but I haven't done recently, so I'd like to read it one more time before we make any action.
Well, and, and one more time to reiterate it, even if we were to adopt it today, that doesn't make it final.
Correct.
Do it again. Okay, but I'm willing to, okay, we'll postpone it till just pick a time.
And one last little caution, we're all used to going on the internet and everything. This is still the official version.
Are you trying to say the internet's incorrect?
Before, I'll tell it again. I watched a young attorney a few years back brief, was arguing for the Supreme Court about how the statute should be interpreted, not to the best. On the Supreme Court webpage, version of the Sentry Code and the official code, there was a difference on a comma placement which changed the meaning and interpretation. This poor attorney wanted, he wanted to dig a hole and hole another down there. I felt sorry for this young attorney, but I don't know that there's differences. I'm just going through the official.
Okay.
And one other thing I do need to bring in. Yesterday, an email was sent out, didn't arrive in my email box until it was formed at nine o'clock on the opiate litigation.
Okay.
I jump in and bring it in here is that I did some research through DEA's database, the ARCO's database where they report any of their controlled substances.
Okay, just, just a second. And just for clarification, this has got nothing to do with the combination of office. This is a separate?
No.
Okay, yep, just, I caught on real quick. This is opiate, okay, opiate settlement.
That opiate litigation. And what kind of disappoints me is the partner general counsel that's handling this for some divisions says this out late in the day yesterday. I don't know where it rolled around until it popped up shortly before I came in. Is that we have to make a decision on whether or not we want to allow this to discuss in the hall. The first half of the email, it says prior to July tenth. Last half of the email, we have till ten PM on July ninth to make a decision. What they're bringing is some further data gathered off of the reporting information. There's been some changes, possible extra defendants. And they're asking each individual subdivision to designate whether we want them to pursue other defendants or not. The other part of the letter is, this is a class action. The judge in the class action is going to pick the class representative for the first one to go to trial. Any of the thousands of counties who have signed on to this litigation could be picked. I would probably be surprised beyond belief if Mercer County were to go with the opinion. So, I have the order from the judge. This case has been due out of the Northern District of Ohio's federal court. I have some questions of Mr. Ragio, who's the attorney. Because he gave us a list of two manufacturers. two manufacturers, and according to this, market share of one of the two, at its highest is five point nine percent of the market, and its lowest is a point three percent. What I would ask is, here's my intentions, I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna talk with the attorneys and find out, okay, what does this really mean? And then they ask me, as counsel of the split subdivision, to make the designation. More defendants may get added, I don't think as far as Mercer County, North Dakota, it's gonna make a whole lot of difference one way or the other, the same now, we've gotta do, John rightly will, regularly, some direction. So it's my intention to make these calls today, and then get this designation form signed to them, but I don't wanna do that without you knowing what I'm up to.
So you don't need anything from us right now?
Well, if my commission is dead center against adding more defendants or not, I kinda wanna know that, I realize I could be a loose candidate in time, because of something like this, I kinda wanna get a feel for where the commission, as the representatives of the people in the county, if you have these strong feelings one way or the other.
No, I don't, you lost me about five minutes ago.
So when you say they wanna add defendants, that could potentially mean that we might get less monies coming to us, because there would be more people that has to be divided amongst?
No, it would be more people where the money's available.
Okay.
Some of these companies that have gotten swept in on this have, within the chapter of protection, there's been a couple, because this doesn't just include manufacturers, includes the distributors, includes the warehouses.
So we're one of the defendants right now?
What's that?
So we're one of the defendants, no, we're, we're plaintiffs.
Plaitiffs, yeah.
And how many defendants are there?
I don't have a square answer on that, but essentially, anybody who made an opiate medication for prescription is lumped in.
Probably made and distributed.
So there's fires, there's markets, there's Johnson.
And so now they wanna add a couple more into it?
Yeah, and the two that they're indicating, they have one in the board, have no market share after two thousand nineteen. And they were one point three one percent from oh six to nineteen, and oh six to nineteen, their market share was sixteen point oh two. These numbers and designations aren't quite clear. So that's some of the things that I need to do before I can say, okay, let's agree to add the caption defendants, and then they wanna know, do we wanna just add these, or if they found others that somehow were selling and ended up through people who were doing business here, if they could add those. My feeling is just, anybody who's applicable, add them.
It just seems appropriate that if anybody had any piece in this, then they should have to pay back, just as well as like Johnson and Johnson would do, or something, to me. So to me, it seems like it would be appropriate to whomever actually would be included in this, should be included in this.
I don't have a problem, either way.
So you got a free little problem? Jean seems to be in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's hard for me to contradict attorney.
Wouldn't be the first time with a dean.
I wouldn't.
Seen it before.
Dave, this woman.
When did that stop?
Because of my prior statement, when you lost me five minutes ago. Okay, I think we're gonna leave it up to you, make your best decision.
Go ahead, I got five folks nodding their head and saying yeah, so I have it up.
Okay.
Is there anything else that you need to do, because I kinda feel like a.
Not that I know of, I, we got one other thing here, and then we're done, and I don't think we need, I don't think we need you here, we jump right on that now. July twenty fifth Children's Mobility Awareness Day.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Who added, who added that?
And Jennifer.
Oh.
I'm just gonna address one thing briefly, since it was my air.
Is that on this one?
Write that down, write that down.
Is this on children's mobility, or are we back to Casper?
No, this is for the children's mobility.
Okay.
So I sent over a proposed proclamation, we are going around to each of the cities, and I forgot to change the last paragraph, so it says mayor. So when he gets to that part, I will change it and send you a new copy, but instead of saying I, mayor of Mercer County, it will be changed to we, the commission of Mercer County, North Dakota.
That was a lot, no, I had.
That was one thing we were like, we had a dick.
Well, thank you guys for, for having us, I'm gonna kinda read off one thing, my, my lovely wife printed the proclamation, but she did not print off what I was going to say, so if I'm trying to shove the phone in my face, it's because I'm trying to read what I was gonna say off my phone.
I was an ass, very readers.
I, I, I'm before you guys today for two purposes, as many of you guys already know, our organization owns and operates the Dakota Wildlife Classic. We embarked on what can only be described as a Herculean effort. We devised a plan to design, fundraise, and construct a ADA compliant wheelchair ramp and disabled persons lift on Army Corps of Engineer land at Beulah Bay campground in five months. Upon completion of this project, it will be donated in its entirety to the Beulah Parks and Recreation, and the community of Mercer County as a whole. During this process, I learned more about the Army Corps and ADA requirements than I care to ever have to repeat. I, however, one thing always stood out above the rest, we, as a community, community as a whole, do not do nearly enough to ensure that our youth with adaptive needs enjoy all that our community has to offer. So in my typical fashion, I took this as a personal challenge, the goal, to create an event, start to finish, focused entirely on giving our young adults and with adaptive needs, a day of fun and excitement that does not come with the typical challenges, apparent faces, by making choices, making sure that they have every box checked before they can even consider getting in the car. Every game, every parking spot, every bathroom, every toy, every item of food, every volunteer is focused on one thing, making sure that the only things doing the adapting are us. How does that look? Let's just say that we have just as many, if not more, medical staff on our committee than we do community members. We have pediatric and occupational therapist firms from Beulah to Fargo helping us with the program, project. In the end, the inaugural Children's Mobility Awareness Festival was born. I felt that the best way possible to show how serious our community was in making this a reality for many years to come is to visit each and every municipality and the county in Mercer County, and work with the elected leaders to make sure, and make an official proclamation, proclaim that on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, all communities in Mercer County officially recognize that day as Children's Mobility Awareness Day. I am here on a mission to have, where I choose to have my family reside in Mercer County, to come to you guys and ask for you to recognize that, that day, and proclaim it so that we can, so that we can show these children that Mercer County, the communities around Mercer County care as a whole. That's, that's the first part, the next part's really ad-libbing. To give you an idea where we are on the project, as I said regarding ADA requirements and, and the Army Corps of Engineers, and engineers as a whole, we, it's, it's been a challenge. We have gotten it done, we have, we worked with a company called Verity Homes and Superior Walls of North Dakota, they're out of Bismarck, they're a precast concrete company. What they were able to do during this process, when the eighty-two S, the engineers who had come up with the original structural design, they, Superior Walls and Verity Homes, had their CAD, had their three D CAD engineering group, take that engineering and turn it into a file that allowed them to actually build the entire structure, format, concrete it, build it in Bismarck. The entire concrete structure is currently built right now in Bismarck, the, based off of the stamped plans that eighty-two S Engineering had provided. Right now, we're still working out, you know, the, the in-core is requiring certain step by step, they want to know literally every, mow the grass, rake the grass, mow the rocks, so we're having to go, go through those steps right now. But because the structure is, is done, assuming that the permitting is being turned in this week, as my fingers, within the last couple of days, this, this final, finalized permitting, the estimated timeline, assuming the core gets the approval, gives us the approval when we need it, is we would start on roughly the seventeenth of July, because everything is already cast and done, and there's no powers, no nothing, any of that stuff to do, they're expecting about two to three days, start to finish, dirt work, haul it in, set it, set the equipment, and, and be ready to go. Obviously, this is like one of those extreme home makeover shows right now, where we're trying to, we're trying to fit in six months' worth of work in, in two or three days. But we have all hands on deck that are, that are working on this. As far as the, as far as the structure and the fundraising, whatnot goes, truthfully, guys, if it was not for this body right here, this would not have happened this year, period. The, the recognition that the Mercer County Commission gave in funding it through the Parks and Wildlife Fund, quite honestly, was the reason why this was able to get done, because we could throw bodies at it, we could, we could throw construction companies, volunteers, but manufacturers of heavy equipment, or manufacturers of the adaptive equipment, they wanna be paid, and that is because of you guys. And so for that, I, I cannot thank you guys enough, this happens in this, in this county because of you. As far as the, as far as the Mobility Awareness Day Festival, honestly, I, I cannot describe the excitement that we, that we have, what we're doing, the community that's rallying behind it, and really, this, just this proclamation says, you know what, guys, we, it's one thing to, to write a check, it's a whole nother thing to put your name on a piece of paper and say, hey, we're gonna work towards making our community better, and, and that's, that's what I'm asking the, this, this commission to do today.
I have just a couple of questions, for recognizing this date, does it cost the county anything to recognize it, or are you looking for more funding?
I mean, I'm, I'm always wanting money, so, yeah, no, we're not asking, it's a, yeah, this is literally just a recognition.
It's not asking for a cash outlay, that, that was the point I wanted to make, I was hearing that right? And, okay, I'm gonna take off my state's attorney hat just a little bit, one of the ways I paid for beer and books in college is I worked for Special Student Services at NDSU. Yeah, we've made great strides in the state and in the county since they were issuing stone tablets for diplomas when I graduated, but it can be better. I participated in the past on some of these fishing, take a kid fishing, and that, we lifted wheelchairs in, and I've seen in other places, Wisconsin, Missouri, and it's not all over, but certain places where they have the equipment to be able to do that much easier. And the thought that might be going through your mind is, okay, we don't have that many wheelchair walker necessitated youth in our county today, right this moment, there's only a few possibly, but the industry for the county is tourism, and that lake. I'm seeing kids coming in, when I fish the lake, from all over the state, Montana, South Dakota, and if we have this in place, and our county recognizes this, and we've already done something that I applaud, by making the funds available to help this project, I can see parents with disabled children coming here because of them. They're gonna come here, they're gonna spend money, they're gonna support our businesses. So, other than this is the right thing to do, there's also that fiscal benefit. I guess what I'm saying now, as your state's attorney, is I'm hoping you give Jeff what he wants today.
You know, I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the Children's Mobility Awareness Day on July twenty second, twenty four.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Who's second?
Jamie.
Jamie, I didn't, I couldn't hear her. Any further discussion?
I just have one thing, you mentioned the, the last paragraph, but also the second sentence, could you change that to visitors of the county instead of the city?
I will make sure that my legal counsel takes care of that.
No, I mean, otherwise, I think it's great.
You're not gonna get suffer tonight.
Where, where, where were you at?
The second sentence.
The second sentence, it acknowledges that all residents and visitors, I should say, of the county.
Oh, okay.
And the only other thing too, to add to that too, is not, with these wheelchairs and things like that, it isn't just, in the, the thing that we got here going on there, it isn't just for children and disabled, there's a lot, I mean, what you say, like, there's other people that, that obviously can use these things too.
Yeah, you know, if anybody, you know, and I wanted to expand on what he had mentioned, if anybody, quite frankly, in talking to the adaptive equipment companies, they said that quite honestly, the people who will use this the most is not those who have adaptive needs, but elderly who cannot, or, or are too uncomfortable trying to go from a dock to, to a boat, or, or vice versa, so this would allow them to be able to, even if, even if it was a calm day where they got on the water, they could, they could come off the water. The other, the other thing I wanted to point out, which I think it's critical to point out, is the lives that this affects or impacts, just this, just what, what Mercer County did for our community, the, the owner of Verity Homes and Superior Walls of North Dakota, Mr. Arthur Goldammer, he sent me an email in the middle of night, one night, and they're building a new large development in Mandan, on, on the river, and part of that development is a large community park within, within their development of, of homes. He was so moved by the project in Mercer County, that he had his designers redesign their park, to be able to make it more inclusive for individuals with, individuals with adaptive needs, ADA compliant bathroom, porta potty places, ADA compliant kayak ramps. He said that he never would have thought of that, because we really don't in many respects, but because of, of what we've done here, because what you guys really kind of kicked off is the reason why, why that's able to happen. The other thing is, is I'll finalize, finish with this, Paralyzed Veterans of, of America just was doing a tournament in South Dakota, and they do it annually, it's, I think it's the nineteenth year or something like that, and they posted a video of an individual in a, in a wheelchair, being lifted with lift straps and a telehandler. And on the surface, you go, wow, it's so great that they're really doing this, but then you go, wait a minute, are we making our paralyzed veterans have to be loaded onto a boat by construction equipment? Now, I applaud them, but we are better than that, and we, Mercer County, will make sure that that never happens at our lake entry points. And we, Mercer County, will make sure that that never happens at our lake entry points.
I agree. A lot of these innovations is because somebody just said, I'm gonna do this. And somebody else sees it and says, why didn't I think of that? Next thing you know, it spreads.
Okay, any further input discussion? Are you done, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jeanne?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, that'll put my state's attorney hat back on, go back to work.
There you go.
There you go.
And I think there's, did we cover all the business?
I checked everything off, so.
All right, beans, there's none for the business, meeting adjourned. I was, I wanted to say beans, there's none for their business, meeting adjourned, but then someone's gonna say, well, wait a minute.
Actually, actually, you have like seventy seconds.
She's gonna email me, that was the last one. She'll be emailing me this, and then those other.
I'm gonna be emailing you what?
No, no.
Okay.
Jennifer is emailing me three different things, and if you sign.
Okay.
Resolution that you brought up. Yeah, you can do this to this for me.
Yep.
You shall receive.
What's your, what's your question, Dan?
You're gonna copy? You read my line.
So anyway, when she sends those, I don't know, she wants to sell those. Three don't wanna hang around here. Yeah, 'cause you've got three, you've got the variants.
Okay.
So anyway.
Turn on the recording now.